Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're going to start our public hearing. I'm going to read our notice of public hearings. Notice is hereby given that on Tuesday, October 8th, 2024, at 7:15 PM in the council chambers of the municipal building for the town of Tassau, Virginia, located at 211 Central Avenue, Tassau, Virginia. The Tassau Town Council will hold a public hearing pursuant to Virginia Code, Town Charter, Sections 2-1, 2-207, and 3-82 to provide the citizens of the town an opportunity to be heard with respect to a proposal for the town to amend Chapter 19, purchasing surplus property of the town code. A copy of the proposed amended ordinance is available for review and inspection during normal business hours, 8:00 AM before 30:00 PM, if the town of Tassau municipal building is referenced here on the file. So first off, do we have any public comments? Brad, do you want to maybe let council know what this is entailing?
What you have basically, your procurement ordinance that's in the code was, I want to say done the last time it was at least enacted into the town code was probably 15 years ago, maybe a little sooner than that. But what procurement works for your manager and for you all as a council with regard to any public contracts, you have the Virginia Public Procurement Act, which governs if you do not have a basically self-government ordinance in place within the town to do procurement, which basically follows certain guidelines with regard to notice advertisement regarding certain types of contracts. The state code, the VPPA is all abbreviated, has guidelines that basically run anywhere from depending on the type of contracts, from $80,000 to $200,000, under those where you do not have to advertise anything above that, you've got to go through notice, you've got to go through either competitive sealed bidding or competitive negotiation. Our town code does provide for that in its own way, so therefore you're in compliance with what the state code would require. Question came up several months ago with regard to towns limits on existing procurement ordinance, which were much lower than what the state standard, I guess it's state guidelines, it's not a standard, as to what the state will allow. And what I compared for you with the proposed procurement ordinance basically does is it comes into line with what each state code specifically provides. So it's now as drafted, as proposed, is a mirror image. So you'll see there were sections 19-49. The prior ordinance that you had had basically a $3,000 limit and then a $3,000 to $30,000 limit, which was much, much, much lower than what the state code allows. And state code under 2.243 or 3 basically allows for your contracts, if they're not expected to exceed $200,000, you do not have to go through competitive negotiation, competitive sealed bidding. Doesn't mean you could in the given case, but you're not required to, and you'd still be in compliance with the VPPA. There's some other nuances to that, as you see there, competitive sealed bidding for professional goods and services, other professional services and non-transportation-related construction, if the aggregate sum of all phases is not expected to exceed $200,000, as I mentioned, transportation, I can't talk about transportation-related construction phases not exceeding $25,000. And then you get into not being required to sue some of the competitive sealed bids for professional services, like engineering services as an example, if it's not expected to exceed $80,000, it's a specific exception. And then you've got what we already have in place, similar to any priority to any contract for community goods or services, if the town's obligation or cost exceeds $25,000 but is less than $200, the person may be entitled to obtain three quotes or bids, but you still don't have to go into all the advertisers, you don't want to get to them, the VPPA. So what's before the audience tonight and for your public hearing is to have any comment, of course, on those changes, if any, were either intended from the general public or from you as council? Any questions?
So later in the council packet, we have, it's a chart, it's a breakdown. That's for when this goes into effect into the code, where we are more restricted than $200,000, as we were talking about the change from $3,000 to $200,000. That section in that chart that outlines our procurement, will that be attached with this section of the code? Shouldn't be, yes. Okay. Yep. I can't remember the page number. It says somewhere down in the 100s, it's like 126.
102.
102. Now, do we need to set a public, or add a first reading for next time?
That's later on the line. This is just a public hearing for the eye on it. And then if you have whatever comments, then during the actual meeting, if you want any changes to what I've drafted, we can go through and do that, and then that'll be the actual first reading, make the changes. No vote tonight, and then depending on how you all proceed, and then if there is no vote, and it's basically approved, is read for purposes of the first reading. Second reading will occur next month, and then you will have an actual vote. If it's passed at that point in time, then it would take effect 30 days from the date it was actually passed. If it's not, of course, and it dies, and the existing procurement that you have in place stays in effect.
Any questions?
I have one other question. On the, so page 102, this, if this were to be changed, the summary of purchasing procedures, is it just the same process where you do a public hearing to change our internal guidelines? Or is that completely internal?
No, it's completely internal.
Okay.
See, that's again, you have your guidelines, you adopt those for purposes of practice, and you do not have a public hearing. You're there, you're in line with what the code provides for, your town code then is in line with what the VPPA allows, and then you set the guidelines. However, and again, if you want to advertise it, you want to have the public hearing, or if you want to have any other type of information with the general public about that, you can, nothing's stopping you from doing that, but you're not required to. Okay? And they're always available for public inspection, anytime to do one, they're affordable, obviously, but then they're also for anybody who comes into town, haunts, as I like to say, according to the guidelines, what you have under procurement, they're there and available for the public to review anytime during regular business hours.
Perfect, thanks. Well, if there's nothing else, I will go ahead and adjourn the public hearing. We'll recess until 7:30. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome, and thank you for coming to the October Town Council meeting and get standing before the collective leaders.
With the leaders to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic, the Constitution, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor May, would you lead us to the manifestation?
Sure thing. Heavenly Bible, we thank you so much that we have the freedom to assemble, have a voice in our town and local government, and thank you for our elected officials, our town employees for the work and the way they put others before themselves, I guess for our blessing over this meeting, that it would be smooth, and even if there's some disagreement, that we would all end the evening in good spirits and appreciable spirits. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, we see. The first on our agenda is a special presentation request. We have Shelby Jean Davidson with the Main Street Motorcycle Concerns. If you could come up to the podium, please.
All right, this is going to be on Facebook. It's going to be on YouTube. I'm going to be on camera. And here I walk in, and I find one, two, three of my church people, so I hope I don't get the demon. It's been a lot, it's really been a concern for so many people in town, and I was in the office yesterday to pay my county taxes, and I asked one girl, I said, "Please, this is the council meeting, and how do you do it, what goes on?" And she says, "It meets on second Tuesday, whatever." And I said, "What am I supposed to do? I have a concern." And I do have a concern of motorcycles. I don't mean to give you a lot, I really don't care, because my concern is on Sunday morning, when we are trying to have church from 10:30 to 2:00, that's basically when you come in, when you leave, motorcycles are constantly going through Main Street, and they're so loud, sometimes music, sometimes gas gets up, or whatever you call it. And to the preachers, we have three pastors, and all three of them have had to stop their shaman, so we can hear them. And sometimes, I mean, sometimes it goes on and on and on. My question is, I guess we can get my glasses so I can see my nose. And I'm not against motorcycles, I'm really not, because Larry is in the family, every day he sits down here. And, I'm helping drive it. But on Sunday morning, like I said, that's my concern, and I mean, several people in church have talked, have talked to me about it, you know, and outsiders have, and I have never sent anything to Brad or to you, Captain, or to Chris here. But what, how, what could be a, what can we do about it? Could there be a separate exit for them to come in on or leave on besides coming through Main Street? There are other churches besides our church that they pass, you know, like the Baptist Church. I'm not sure, I don't know, but I was thinking that the federal exits, which is the best, and they're also close to back to the drive-in where they're going, that's usually where they're going. So that's, that's just my concern. And one thing, when I have been, I mean, I've visited different places because I have a family out, I have a brother in Richmond, and when we go to church on Sunday, if that's sort of the area of worship is in progress, they have a, I don't know if you call it police in there, or the thing of somebody that they don't basically block off a certain area of the road, and then they have someone that escorts older people across the streets and whatever, back to their car. So one other incident that we had, which is not, which is motorcycle instance, we were coming off from Bluefield two weeks ago, and there was motorcycles in front of us and there was motorcycles behind us, so my friend did not get over at the hammer lanes, he caught it, and he couldn't, you know. And then we got to the ramp out here at ramps, where you pull off, you know, to go under the road, four lane. Immediately, about five, about nine in front of us and two or three behind us, when they started to turn off and to go under the road, you know, off the ramp there, they stopped immediately on the ramp, which almost tossed us direct, because there was a car in front of us, and here we were, and there's a car behind us. So that is just some of my concerns, what can be done with basically how they exit and what we should do about it.
I'll defer to Chief because he is our expert on this, but I don't believe because it's a public road and if there are street legal automobiles, motorcycles, whatever, there's nothing we can do to stop them, correct?
Brad was just talking, legally, no, but what we can possibly do is put up a signage at each end of the street for Sunday, if you're in church, please be respectful, church services going on. Legally, there's nothing that, as far as code, Virginia would alleviate.
Yeah, I've, you know, something like that, it's just if you just have, you know, if they just have respect for church services, I think that would be great, if you let them know that the town actually had, they put up some kind of notices, church wing on or something, but they even, I mean, they even played their music loud, played the music loud. And I know you've got.
Disappointing unless there would be something as far as a town ordinance, I don't know that we can really alleviate them from traveling, but we could try with signage, maybe, if that's something council would.
And I think as a suggestion, Jean, and I'm right there with you, I know we were writing on service and some guy came through this Sunday, and most of the times, they're pretty respectful of it, I think they see that they recognize, hey, look, it looks like a church, it walks like a duck, but it's a duck, it's a church, and the service is not, since it's on Sunday, so they'll slow down. But we had one come through Sunday, he just loaded it, and he, he, and right, he went by the church.
Yeah, yeah.
And you could hear, and it took you there 10 or 15 seconds, 20 seconds, whatever leg in the service. I've seen in other locations where, just like with funerals, you'll see where you'll have a signage out, slow funeral, be my funeral in progress, just so people will know that there'll be a long procession, it may take up an intersection, it may affect a stoplight or a stop or other traffic signal, and my suggestion would be is that we, I'm certain it would be something, I think, that possibly the church would be responsible for, I don't think the town, but I don't think the town would object if we had our own signs, if we had somebody, Chris. Welcome back. It's a put up, and basically what I call like a sandwich full of type sign, and you put one at the beginning of the curb, down where the old gas station used to be, or you put one at the head of Main Street, at the common attorney's office, because you got to get Wilbur Memorial's right there as well, and then the other churches could do the same thing on their respective streets, but I don't know what more, unless we have, you know, literally, they come through and they, and we do not have enough noise ordinance here in town. We have a nuisance ordinance, but that's really, it doesn't really define by decibels for any type of sound level that we can, that the officers could really enforce, and I really think that's probably about it at this time, Jean, that I wouldn't tell the council that they would be required.
So perhaps it would be the church's responsibility.
I would say church's responsibility, the church could do that, I don't think necessarily that the town would have a problem with us putting signs on, like on the sidewalk areas that were visible, you know, maybe two feet off the ground, so you could see them, not obstructing traffic, of course, but that might be a possibility.
I mean, just thinking of people crossing the street, see, Main Street has no parking lot, so you can't park in that lot, and Christian church also uses lots, so there's nothing, nowhere to park except the upper street, upper street, and when one comes through, not, not just this time, but when they do come through and they're sitting up and sitting down, it's, it's just not on Sunday, that, I mean, they're liable to get, you know, a couple of ones cross or something like that, so anyway, thank you, it's just a thought.
Thank you.
It's just a thought.
I'll bring that up.
Yes. What's on your mind, Pastor May?
It's like, there's a sign down in front of my house, do not litter. 90% of litter in front of my house is trying to dead sign. Most motorcycle people, I think, respectful for churches on Sunday morning, but if you have something on the block on fire.
You might go stop.
He's going to ride a diesel and they see the signs.
Diesel with the turbos.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it's more disruption.
And you'll hear, of course, we're right on, we're right on the street, and this time of year, we'll have our doors open, our windows open, and I can still think about, I remember when I was up in New York, a very large church that took up an entire block in Lower Manhattan, and you think, oh, the traffic in New York that goes on, but those churches are used to it, and the design with the doors that minimize the sound and so, and it's just, we don't have that here in the rural area, but we have them this time of year, and this will stop, Jean, probably, you know, end of October, first November, because you won't get as many riders, and it will slow down, and it still isn't going to stop, it's no more, no different than, like I said, a 350 truck with a diesel with, comes through and opens it up, or a tractor trailer, which they don't come through that often, some do, and they all once hit a jake break, decide they, you're going to get that too, and we don't have any specific code.
I remember an officer, Richland, was charging him on the baffles, he'll take a stick, go up there and see if it's hollow, like, you remember that?
Well, and that's, of course, you've got.
But I mean, that's just a waste of time, Tony.
Yeah.
But they, but they can check that out, and that's a, it's a.
Could, but.
But anyway, it's Sunday.
We'll listen to it, I'll listen to talking to Anthony about it. Anthony, our position. And sit down at the head of the council while we talk for the rest of the room to upstairs, see what you all, what do we want to talk about, so we'll see. Thank you, Jean. Yes, thank you for sharing your concerns. Next on the agenda, the approval of minutes for council meeting on September 2nd, 2024, and council IEDA special call meeting on September 18th, 2024. Do you maintain a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion?
I'd like to prove them, there are some spelling errors in there that we can clean up.
Anything else? On favor of approval, say so, by say no. All opposed, say so, by say nay. Right, motion carries. So next is the approval of financial statements and financial report for September 2024. Do you maintain a motion to approve? So move. Second. Any discussion? On favor of approval of the financial statements and financial report for September 2024, say so by say aye. Or third, say so by say nay. All right, so next, the committee conference updates. Councilmember Davis, could you give us a planning commission committee update, please?
We did not need.
So there's updates.
Tell him why.
Were you stuck in Amsterdam?
No, I had a schedule, but attorneys need to get up to speed for the solar, not Brad, another attorney.
Yeah, also.
Not Brad.
It was scheduled, but then it got unscheduled.
There is the November meeting, just to give you a little bit of an update, it's our, Chris and my understanding, that the attorney, we have basically hired, the council, excuse me, has hired to independently represent the town on the Elliott Energy proposal for the solar facility, solar, the five megawatt facility, is going to be present, at least he will probably be present for it, at least in Zoom, and having a couple of members from Elliott present for the November meeting, as long as we get a site development plan, at least employment area in place for the planning commissions you consider at the next meeting, but right, at this, as of today, we have not received anything yet, and they're supposed to be working on that, and we'll get that too.
My hand motion. What's the date on that meeting, the next meeting?
It's the first one I date off.
Yes.
It's not the date for the election.
The fourth?
Yeah.
So anything else, any questions for Councilmember Davis? All right, so moving right along, unfinished business. Manager Reagan, could you go give us some update on the Tassau Cinema and Entertainment LLC, an IRF grant?
So Tassau Cinema and Entertainment, as we know, have been working on the Arabic Theater that's at Four Way. They apply for an IRF grant, which is an industrial revitalization grant, and it's actually a loan, because a private entity owns the property, so it would be administered through the town and DHCD. The current terms are, the award was $399,000, it was a 20-year term of 2.5% interest. We do have a contract with DHCD that's waiting to be signed. The cinema business is also waiting for it to be signed, so they can continue their progress. However, right now, we have not signed it, because there was some other discussion if we wanted to possibly go a different route with offering different types of cinemas possible, and I'm just seeing some direction of what you all would have to do.
It's probably a lot longer of a discussion than what we want to do tonight, unless you need it, like right away, has DHCD already signed it, or is it their blanket?
So we had a kickoff meeting, and it was about, was it in August? So they've been waiting on us since August. I mean, they have not, they have not asked us why we've not signed it yet, but I do know they're waiting on us.
So they've provided us templates, project templates, correct? Or they've provided us with what they want to see and what they'll, they'll approve and what they want for.
And, and anything that, that we do with this contract does have to be approved.
So if we make any changes to that template, we have to send back to them and get it back?
Yes, for approval.
But if we keep the template the same, they would approve that and we would move forward?
Yes.
Are there any incentives in their template that they provided, meaning like interest only loans or?
So there's not actually in there, however, we have spoke with them, and they did say they would allow one to two years of interest-only payments if they would want to, you know, kind of put that on the, the far end of the payments. So that is an option that we would be able to offer.
And this is being paid back to the IDA, correct?
To the town.
To the town.
Mm-hmm.
And so if we did have them do interest-only for a couple of years, then we did rebate that, does that have to go into that template as well?
So I spoke with Eric Young, and Eric first asked what the terms were, and then he kind of told me some things that they had done with their IDA before, and they had an IRF recipient, and they would let the recipient go through the contract, as they did here, they paid their payments, they did what their contract said, and then the IDA remade that payment, that business.
But does that have to be in the contract?
He did not say that it did.
But my assumption would be if we make changes to the terms that DHCD provided us, they're going to want to see any changes so they can approve the way to what obstruction?
Well, the rebate can be done outside of that, on different terms, I can see it both ways, I guess.
Is that interesting, that you talked about this?
Interest.
Does it?
He used.
Just want to make sure they understood that.
The discussion that I had was if we let the business owner make interest-only payments, say for two years, we could rebate those interest-only payments for the two years.
You can't rebate.
Then they would take, ooh, sorry, go ahead.
If you think about, well, so you rebate the principal, you basically undermine the whole principle.
Right, right, that's what I was saying, so you can't.
It's the revolving part. It's like the door revolves one way and it never closes, and it's gone.
Right.
And you don't, and put me to think the purpose of what you're having a fund for, and then potentially for the uses of the IDA for other businesses.
Right, right. And another conversation that I had had was that if the business owner complies with the contract that they signed, then we take an extra step to rebate that, they still comply with their contract.
Right.
And that's, that's kind of how the county had handled theirs as well, is my understanding.
Okay.
And if you all are not ready to move on it tonight, that's okay, I just need.
So in that last scenario, they rebated principal?
No, can't rebate on principal.
Okay, it just made it sound like they've remade the entire.
That's why I want to make sure you all understood that it wasn't, that defeats the purpose if you.
Right.
And, and the conversation that I had with, with Mr. Young was we can rebate the interest if they would make the interest on the payments.
And that would be for the two-year term or whatever we definitely.
So, but ultimately, it's not a grant or a buck.
No, it's a grant to us. It's a grant to us, because it was a loan to the individual.
Depending on property, should we?
That was discussed in the town council meeting that it was presented to us, that it was a grant issued to the town that we would create a loan to the business.
Yes.
And she agreed with all that?
So my understanding is, when she was first awarded, she thought that it was a However, because she privately owns the property, it is not a grant, it's a loan. If the town owned the property, and she was doing the work, it, it could be, but just a grant because we owned it, but because. because we owned it, but because she privately owns it, it's a loan.
So is she going to sign it still? I guess that's what.
She has contacted me as yesterday, as recent as yesterday, to ask, you know, what's, what's the status update, when we want to sign. So, I mean, I do think she at this pace to sign.
Yeah, has it, has written or is she expecting?
Obviously, she would like.
I'm sure she would like, but she understands it is going to be under the terms of the loan.
Yes, she, she, she understands it is a loan.
So she's agreeing with that, is she?
She, she completely understands it's a loan, not a grant.
Okay.
I would be okay with doing the two years of interest-only payments and possibly doing a rebate for those payments, because it's kind of like a construction loan. You get it, you use it, you build everything, and then you pay it back.
I'd like to say.
You sent me some precedent here.
Yes.
So in the precedent, you know, if you're, which I kind of want to pull back up, I did this at one point, pull back up the numbers, you know, with 20, 20 years on this loan, two years of interest on it, 2.5s, you know, it's not crazy amount of money. And still it allows you to achieve, you know, a loan that potentially keeps up with inflation and allows us to continue that mission of having a revolving fund. Are we saying two years because that's what DHCD said that they're willing to go up to?
That's for the two years that, I would say, I mean, until, well, that's a, that's
a hard one, because if you say that it's upon completion, then you start paying the loan and you don't get the rebate anymore, but then as the completion, it'll be delayed.
Okay, so she has 18 months to complete the project, and it's at that time that she is starting payments.
Okay.
And she's, she had hoped to be open at the end of the year.
Right.
I don't know that she's going to be able to do it then.
Right.
But that was her hope, she was hoping to be able to do it at the end of the year. And so one year of interest would be $9,497. That's one year.
How's the interest compounding on this loan?
It's a simple one.
It's probably, I mean, I don't know that answer either, but that's what I would, I would think for the purpose of your discussion, I would assume that at least.
So if you all want to do it right. So she might not even utilize all the 300, whatever.
So she would have to expend her funds, and then she could submit reimbursement documents to us, like invoices, checks, we have to submit to DHCD. DHCD will release most of us, so we can use that card.
So DHCD is not releasing 399,000 to us to sit and?
That's my understanding.
Be a lot colder if they did. I'm sure, I'm sure they thought that one through.
Well, let me ask this. Say she only utilizes the loan for $200,000. Do we have $399,000 for the revolving fund loan?
That's their money regardless. So there was a question, what happens if there is a default? That money is still ours.
But what if she, if DHCD hasn't given us the money until she spends it and needs it reimbursed, she hasn't spent it, so she's not needing reimbursement, and you're not up to the max amount yet, well then DHCD give us the money that's left.
I don't have a solid answer for that, but since they said it's a $399,000 award, I would think if we had another business, they could apply, and that would start that revolving.
But it would have to be, this project would have to be essentially done at that point. She would have to have defaulted on the loan, did we have whatever money's left?
No, 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 it wouldn't be default. This, she just didn't spend it all, so she's still making her payments. We still have a chunk of money. She's finished, her, she's finished her project, so we still have this chunk of money that she didn't spend, but it's sitting in our bank account that we could give as a loan to another business, the DHCD account.
Yes.
It's DHCD.
And it would be in their account if someone makes an application to the IDA of the town says, I want to, this is my business, you've still got that, let's say she used 200 before she defaulted, you still got 200 to pay a one, or she did default, she, she's doing fine, you've got the 200 plus whatever principal payments and interest payments she's making, you know, beyond that for the life of her loan, that is going to be in your pot of money then. Then I think it comes, once it's released, I don't know how that would work when you have, that actually goes back into the DHCD account for the town to access it, or if it actually comes under town's control, that I'm not sure.
I think it came back to us.
For the 399, she had to present all kinds of documentation to DHCD, so she has lots of expenses for that, and I think that she'll spend that within some.
And she's, she has to match what she's spending.
Let's say another business coming and got an application for a loan, would they be eligible for the two-year interest payments?
Well, that's kind of what, that's what's saying is we're setting precedent with us.
I was trying to look for consistency.
We don't even know if she would approve that.
I mean, you'd be able to, you'd be able to.
But let me, let me make sure I've got my head right around this. We've been awarded 400, 399,000. She's, has expenses and receipts for that plus.
She will have.
Will.
For sake of argument, let's say yes.
Yes, yeah. We signed this contract, DHCD says, you're good to go, she gives us $400,000 worth of receipts, then she's completed the project, she doesn't make a payment on anything until she completes the project.
Yes.
Then she can defer payments for two years and do, we could say that we'll do a two-year deferred principal only payments, right?
Interesting.
Interesting, yeah, I'm sorry, got to head this up there. So the money's gone, she's, she's got, she's completed the project now, and she starts making those payments, then she defaults, and doesn't make any more payments. That money's gone, we don't, we don't have it to give away, just whatever she's paid back to DHCD.
DHCD did say that we can put a lien on the property in that case.
So we can get the property back?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, she spends $200,000, she completes the project, so then she has, we could defer the interest on the $200,000, then we have that other $199,000 that we could possibly give to another business.
So if I, DHCD would have to approve, right? And then wouldn't start the process all over again?
Okay. When she makes the payments, does that come to the town, or does that go to DHCD?
My understanding, it comes to the town.
Comes to the town, it's our money.
So it would be our loan at that point, but DHCD would still have to approve?
That's my understanding.
Those projects?
Because they have to approve those invoices, there's certain expenses that are eligible, so DHCD has to be involved in approving each.
Okay.
It is only for construction.
Right.
The construction expenses, that's all for us.
Okay, I just wanted to get my head right around all the various things. I'd, I'd be willing to look at the two-year.
I am too, and I think it's, I like the idea of not just saying you don't have to pay it. I like the idea is you pay it, and then if the IDA says, rebate this back to you, they can make that decision, but not to say you just don't have to pay it, or want some type of commitment.
You got to get back with it, so I, I like to sit going through. She's willing to deal with you on that and what stipulations you've got, I go for it so she can get that theater going.
On what terms?
So we can get out there and watch it.
But what terms would you want?
We all want to see the project done, that's, that's not your question, but like, what do you mean, like, what terms do you want to see?
You wanted it first.
Two years, make sure she pays the payment back after, after completion. After completion.
Yeah, so completion, lien on the building in case we have a, a loss. You still come out.
Brian, have you, do you know she has other plans on the property?
The only one that I was, I was definitely going about was one she had at the town, because the town initially had the trust for, I want to say 400,000, and that was released fairly quickly, relatively speaking, my project. I want to say it was in, what, two years, two and a half years it was released. And now, then if she's turned around, it would not surprise me if there'd been other bar against it to try to finish that project, but I don't know, I don't, I'd have to go with the title and see.
Yeah, because I would just be wondering what lien position we would be in, assuming we would be in a second lien position.
Was there any discussion, was there any discussion about subordination due to other, did DHCD require that? Don't duck on it.
Get that information.
Okay, we have to look and see.
Or do you want to have, we can see if this is minimal to share, and then if it is?
So it would be the two-year interest only?
Yeah.
Then we have prior to pay, making the regular payment.
So.
Well, what about completion date stipulation?
That's in the document, right? The completion date stipulation is 18 months.
Once the contracts are 18 months.
So 18 months.
She's going to have to.
So she has to fully.
That's good for us. She has to.
Would we have to, we would just have to amend the contract to put that two-year deferred principal only payment down right now?
And DHCD approved that, so I think that would be fine with that.
Bob, go over it. See what, see what she's finished, I don't know, she's day or night, I guess. Not with, not opposed again.
Let me make sure I understand, we can sign the contract if we agree to the terms. DHCD approved interest-only payments for up to two years, and that's what we're offering? Anything else that we're offering? Two years, interest only? Okay.
The other question I had, are we, are we locked into this project only, or so she, she doesn't use 399, whatever, money's left on the table? Do we then have the opportunity to have any additional loans or any other business ventures that could have similar terms, and we use the total amount that we rewarded in the grant?
I think yes, but I'll air it up.
Okay.
Well, I don't think we would, because she is awarded up to 399, until she completes that project, she would have access to that whole 399.
But if she completes and she has leftover.
Right, that's, we, I don't think we would be able to do that until she completes.
Until like, yeah, she completes it or like March of?
Or like. Yeah.
How many councilmembers been out there?
I mean, I parked in.
I've been. Anybody want to look in there?
Going in since you haven't worked on, no, but I'm out there at the lake all the time, I'm watching to see if somebody's working.
Yeah, the opposite, right on the side of the corner.
Yeah.
It'd be good to go out there, because she's scared.
Do we need a motion?
Manager Reagan, contact.
She's going to look into it first, and then it's come back to you guys and say, then I think you're good at that point, right?
Okay, that's it. Yeah, don't forget to motion that first.
I'll reach out to DHCD tomorrow, get verification, and then I will let you all know what they have.
I guess you got to reach out to the business center as well, but.
It's all, it's your doing deal this is, right? Because if you go out and try to borrow money at this time, like what if, eight, eight hundred percent.
So, I mean, this, to me, this is a very pro-business move on the council's part to assist in getting a local business going. Alright, there's nothing else, we'll move on to new business. So first is the ordinance amendment for the IEDA attorney.
Did you guys remember, I guess, oh, it's been two or three months ago, the IDA amended its bylaws relative to qualifications for member participation, member selection by the council. And in doing so, it broadened the, the footprint and types of persons that would be eligible to serve on the IDA board. We've got the same issue coming up in just a few moments as regarding the bill, the code of appeals, with the way that the, the actual code, this is out of Article II of your, of your town code, the way it was written, only town residents can be on the IDA, and the IDA's been going fairly strong now, really throughout the past eight years, but it is difficult to keep certain members who are qualified, who are also the residents of the town, and so it came to the IDA, basically the decision we need to broaden our ability to recruit good folks when we lose other members who, for whatever reason, go off the board. So the town code actually previously read, this is off of Article, check two, Article three, and there's several sections that are dealing with the qualifications and for meetings that we have to basically, if we're going to change. This will be the first read of this ordinance, basically to allow for the possible candidates would be either one, residents of the town, qualified to vote because of the county, or thereafter owns real property in the town and votes in the county, or owns and operates a licensed business in the town instead of just being a resident. There are a couple of different folks I can, we've discussed that come to mind that operate businesses here in town, but live right outside of town, and would be excellent candidates for either one of these positions, the VZA would be another, we're not even talking about that tonight, but that's what this basically does, so I'll go ahead and read this, it won't take very long. Proposed ordinance amendment to be redone by the council of town, Taz, Virginia, pursuant to town charter sections 2-1 and 2-428, and town code section 2-51, that the council hereby amends the sections 2-45, 2-46, 2-47, and 2-51 of Article three, check two of the code of town of Taz, Virginia, follows. This will be section 2-45, Board of Director qualifications. Any person who is qualified to vote in the town of Taz, Virginia at the time of his or appointment and thereafter resides in the town, and here is the changed language, or thereafter owns real property in the town and is qualified to vote in Tazville County, or thereafter owns and operates a licensed business in the town and is qualified to vote in Tazville County, shall be eligible to serve as a member of the Board of Directors for the Industrial Economic Development Authority. Section 2-46, subsection E is being modified as follows, the subsection removal. Members of the board shall serve their designated term as previously stated, but may be removed from the board as follows. Under paragraph two, we had non-residency if any member ceases to be a resident of the town. Striking that and changing the language to read non-residency, a member's office shall be deemed vacant for non-residency in the event that such a member fails to satisfy at least one of the following criteria during his or her term. A, maintains residency in the town, B, owns real property in the town and is qualified to vote in Tazville County, or C, owns and operates a licensed business in the town and is qualified to vote in Tazville County. A, B, C, and D, and I think there's another couple of sections are all left alone and remain unchanged. Section 2-47 on meetings, as you may be aware, the IDA now meets on the first Monday as opposed to the second Tuesday, so we need to change that to subsection C to read as follows. Regular meetings, monthly meetings, shall be held in council chambers for the town of Tazville on the first Monday of each month at 4:30 PM, striking second Tuesday at 6:30. These will be without notice unless the same shall be a legal holiday. If so, said meeting shall be done on the following business day or thereafter, for the provided wherever that the chairman or vice chairman is or absence. Or in capacity shall determine after consultation with the secretary that there are no matters pending requiring action by the Board of Directors in any scheduled regular meeting. The chairman or vice chairman in his or her absence or in capacity may cancel any such regular meeting. And all other subsections of that, sections of that article, maintenance remain as is, unchanged. Section 2-55, modifications and amendments, this was just a typographical that I thought I called. Uh, this was just a typographical that I thought I caught this and read through it and went ahead and, and matched you to amend this as well. The regulations, restrictions, and boundaries established, it used to read in these bylaws, and that was just erroneous when it got adopted. It needs to read under this article. Made from time to time, the amended, supplemented, changed, modified, or appealed by a favorable majority of the votes of the Tazza Town Council, pursuant to guidelines established through the charter for the town of Tazza. Any questions on that? So this will be the first reading, second reading, and scheduled for next month. And you can vote at that point in time, of course, you can also waive the second readings to have the first. You can vote on it, and it can be passed at that meeting and be effective then for December.
Okay, so I would work in favor of, uh, waiving the second reading?
Well, no, that's not, no, just, just the first reading.
Okay.
We just waived that.
Just the first reading, next time, I'm just giving you the clementaries for the sequel, or just next month. And I'll do the same thing here in just a second, get the best one I can. So, uh, the second thing you have on your agenda, this was for me again, for the board of building code of appeals, the same basic theory and theme for the change. Wanted to make where you've got more people to fit in the footprint for possible candidates for the board of building code of appeals. So this amendment will be under chapter five, buildings, Article one in general, section five dash three statewide building code of appeals. Beed ordained by the council of town of Tazza, Virginia pursuant to town charter section two dash one and Virginia Code, section thirty-six dash ninety-eight, replacement volume twenty twenty-four, and a little section beyond that. That said council hereby amend section five dash three of Article one of chapter five of the code of town of Tazza, want hereby adopt said ordinance amendment, the town code is follows. Section five dash three statewide building code of appeals. Subsection A, the council of town of Tazza shall appoint a town board of building code of appeals here and after T T B B C A in order to hear appeals of any person agreed by the town building department's application of the building code or refusing to grant a modification to provisions of the building code set forth here and above. Said T B B, T T B C A shall consist of at least five members, used to say residents of the town, who will strike that duly appointed by said council, so do a read. Shall consist of at least five members duly appointed by said council, with each said member being appointed for a term of three years, period. New angles will be as follows. Council should primarily base its board member selection from town residents of voting age, comma, but council may also consider any other person who either owns real property from the town or who owns and operates a business in the town and is qualified to vote in Tazza County as a potential member candidate. All other subsections will remain unchanged. So you see, that basically fits the same overall theory and theme footprint that we had for the, for the I D A. So you then basically open the door for some qualified folks that have interest and stakeholders within town, uh, just don't actually live in the town itself, live in the county and have business here.
Is, is there a minimum number that has to be on the board, that the five members come from state?
If this is out of, if you see the Virginia Code thirty-six, this is probably eight, that's where it's coming from. And I think that was the minimum number we had, trying to get more than that's a stretch.
I was thinking as time goes, if that changes to, I mean, the code would have to change, but see if there's any reason we're gonna do three, I mean, odd numbers for voting reasons, I guess.
That's correct. Some questions? All right, we'll see you next month.
So next on the agenda, Warhawk Park project, be it for D A, can I agree?
On September the eighteenth, I had a meeting with Condon Wanny Patterson, Vera Mitchell, I'm sorry, Condon Wanny Patterson, with each one teach one. Vera Mitchell of First Baptist Church, which is located at three fifty-three Carlin Avenue, and Susan and myself. The purpose of that meeting was to discuss a piece of property that is located, um, adjacent to the town I D A's access to Warhawk Park, um, so the property is right beside of that and is on the First Baptist Church. And they would like to deed that property to Warhawk Park, which would have to be each one teach one as they're incorporated status. And they did ask if the town might help with the cost of doing this. So I, I reached out to Brad and, and said what they were interested in doing. I had not spoken with Ms. Mitchell because I wanted to ask approval first. But Brad basically said, you know, if, if we would direct him, he could do a deed of donation for First Baptist Church to each one teach one. The church would need to provide all the information that Brad would need, he could prepare the deed and record it. He said the maximum cost would be about three hundred dollars. And what this will do for Warhawk Park, it will give us a better access point, it will give us more parking, which would be very beneficial. And, you know, also if the church was having something that they needed, an, an extra parking lot for them, they would also be able to use that if they needed. But there's, there's a lot of good going for Warhawk Park. Robin with Clutch Valley Community Action was able to get a seventy-six thousand dollar grant for a piece of equipment, a playground. It's been about a, a month ago, several of us, Chris, Susan, myself, Donnie, um, Condon Wanny, Eric Young, Jeff Mansour, and Robin with Clutch Valley Community Action. We all went in and kind of did a site visit and took their site plan and said, will this actually work? So we kind of got to looking and talking and the utilities with where their shelter and the restrooms were to be. We decided it would be much easier and much better for them if they would kind of flip flop a couple of things. And everybody was very in agreement with that and, um, there's good things happening there. So if we could get that piece of property donated to Bill, that would help us all.
For clarification, um, it looks like that the driveway to zero nine four A nine eight is in that park.
It is right against. The lines are skewed a little bit, yeah.
And you gotta realize too, that diagram you have, as well as you, there's nice little stamps, this is not the scale, this is.
Yeah.
So you just cut up to the driveway?
It's hard to say, those are created for G I S purposes, for the commission of revenue, to have a general idea, show the public where the lines are, but they may not be really accurate, they're close approximations, but sometimes I found, sometimes there's significant discrepancies, but those are pretty close.
Ms. Mitchell said that they had discussed that same thing, cause that was one of their concerns, looking at this picture. And she said it is, it is right by their property.
Just to give an idea, what, what I, what I told them, relative, if you all agree for me to do that work, was strictly to take care of getting the deed directed, if they get one providing, one the deed to the property, uh, the inference is it is owned by a church, they're gonna have to have the church, church trustees to convey it. Those trustees are gonna have to have been properly appointed by the circuit court. A lot of times you'll find with these older churches, they have older trustees, their trustees have been appointed a while back, some of them have passed away, they have moved. And then you don't have the same trustees on your deed or any of your documents in church that allow you then to be able to make any present conveyance of your property. You gotta going back to church, going back to church, going back to court first to get the circuit court to approve those trustees. That's a little bit more involved process. I don't know what they're gonna run into with that, and they may run into that same problem, folks, so when I told them the number, that was a low end number, assuming everything was provided and ready for me to do the work.
But that, that would be worth they had to do.
Yes, that's what I'm saying, and they may then come back and say, well, we have, we don't have this, we don't have these things. And it's not uncommon for a lot of older churches, but I would be prepared if they may come back and say, well, can you help us do this too? So, just to give you a heads up, that might be the case, I won't know until they produce stuff, they take care of it, so. And I'll work with them and try to be as aggressive as I can to help, but it may be, it gets a little bit more time intensive than you all just are willing to do without them jumping in and helping, so.
So we need to, those to purr, to allow him, for, for us to do the donation D A.
D A.
Basically preparing the donation, the legal fees of preparing.
Would this technically be a donation to the church?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Basically, yes, cause it's their responsibility as the owners of the property to prepare the deed and do the conveyance. And you're going from a five oh one C three to another five oh one C three, so there's, that'll be something, I'm, I'm not considering, say, what tax implications it would for recording fees. But that'll be for them to work out, tell them, and do that, and plus there's potentially some exemptions there for both sides in terms of so they can, it's not gonna be much either way, because the property is, there's not even, there's not even a house on this, it's just a pretty lot.
It's just a people.
So, you're not talking about a whole lot involved there for them. Even if there is any assessing impact, and I don't believe there will be, it's the version five oh one C three.
Do we go on?
Hold on. You got that motion?
You got it, we did have motion in second.
I made the motion, I heard.
What, what was the motion?
To allow for the town. To do the deed of donations for that property.
Deed donation.
There's a contribution from the town to the property.
Right.
For the max of three hundred dollars?
Three hundred.
Is that in the motion?
I did not specify that. If you'd like to modify it.
I would like to see, I, I would like to have that in there, just max of three hundred.
I'll modify it to, to three hundred dollars.
So. We need a second, right?
Second.
There we go, any discussion?
The question I was gonna have, you may have said this at the beginning, sorry if I lost it. This property is being gifted to who?
Each one teach one.
Okay, and the adjacent properties, just for this part, and then, uh, so where the fields are and then the accessway on the, on our G I S, those are owned by our I D A, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
We had already voted previously to transfer that to each one teach one, have we not?
I don't think so.
We went through that.
Set a wild ride to.
And, and working with Mr. Patterson, and if the powers would be there, they agreed that the best way for them to have the property title was to remain in the town at the long term, twenty years, twenty year extension.
Will this, should this also be going to the I D A?
That's a, the church wants to do this to their, to each one, each one.
Each one teach one.
Yes, that's their call.
That's their call, okay.
It's their property, they want to contribute to us in the project, and that's, I think that's the way it ought to go, if it goes to each one, each one, that's their.
Okay.
Just follow up on that, there's no, whether it's them or it's the I D A, there's no, like, does it expedite it? Any of it came to the town versus, you're still gonna need the board of trustees, and there's no advantage.
No, 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 from that end coming, from the church to the each one teach one, no.
Okay.
Either way, the church has gotta get through those hoops, by statute, they don't have a choice. All churches own property, it's through their trustees. And they have to be court appointed.
So, there's no more discussion, I hope I get this right. So, all in favor of approval to allow Brad to work up to three hundred?
Three hundred, that's what we'll say.
Three hundred dollars.
To prepare the deed.
To prepare the deed. State, state of what state I? All opposed, state of what state may? All right, motion carries. Next is the proof of resolution code conduct for U S D A grant application for a police cruiser.
Every year we have a lot to do, let's see, we'll develop it to try and get a grant for a police cruiser. Their budget year starts October the first, so we can now open up a grant application for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five. But before we can apply, we have to have a resolution and code of conduct passed and approved by the board, just so we can apply.
So, apply for free money.
Apply for free money. They did tell me that in, in the recent, you know, years past, that it was twenty-five thousand dollars. And that's actually what we did budget for, for that grant item. Last year we did not receive it, so I'm hoping this year we have a, a better chance.
I have a question for the chief. Fifty-one, only forty-three, car forty-three, I guess, and car fifty-two. I've been there since, for two thousand miles, uh, a month. Is that the way they have to cattle back and forth to home, or is it?
I'm not sure who forty-three and fifty-one is, but I will tell you that Chief Mills did a hard one in Castlewood, one in Marion before he left, so that's possibly those two vehicles.
That drives a long way.
So, Brad, did we have to read this resolution? I don't think in the past we did, but do we?
With regard to. Uh, for purpose, I, I recommend anytime you've got either resolution or ordinance to read. Why is it like four pages long?
I'm just kidding.
I was like, let me hold on, hold on.
So, I'll read it.
Resolution of the governing body of town of Tazza, Virginia.
Yeah, it's good to read, I'm, I'm always, I just think it's good for access.
The governing body of the town of Tazza, Virginia, consisting of seven members in a duty call, or duly called meeting held on the eighth day of October twenty twenty-four, at which a quorum was present, resolved as follows. Be it hereby resolved that in order to facilitate obtaining financial assistance from the United States of America, the United States Department of Agriculture, rural development, quote, or, for instance, the government, in the purchase of a police vehicle to serve the community, the governing body does hereby adopt and abide by all covenants contained in this agreement, documents, and forms required by the government to be executed. Be further resolved that Leanne Raven, town manager of the town of Tazza, Virginia, be authorized to execute on behalf of the Tazza Police Department the above referenced agreements, documents, and forms, and to execute such other documents, including but not limited to debt instruments, security instruments, and or grant agreements, as may be required, in obtaining with such financial assistance. This resolution is hereby entered at the permanent minutes of meetings of this board. So we need a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Assured.
Any discussion? All in favor of approving resolution, state of what state I?
Aye.
All opposed, state of what state may?
Next one.
Yeah, the code of conduct. No employee, officer, or agent of, of the owner shall participate in the selection, award, or administration of contracts supported by rural development funds. If a conflict occurs, real or apparent, would be involved. The above code conduct was approved at a meeting held on day October twenty twenty-four, and seven members of town council were present, which represents the forum, above was dealt with this resolution, and the resolution was adopted by a vote of
Eight nays.
Six ahs and zero nays, I assume. And with zero of spanning.
Next, Joe.
Do I, I need to make a motion to.
Approve the code conduct.
Yeah, I'll make, make a motion to approve the code conduct.
I'm sorry.
Any discussion? All in favor of approving code conduct, state of what state I?
Aye.
All opposed, state of what state may? There we go. So moving right along, the next item on the agenda is the first reading to procurement ordinance. As we discussed earlier.
Uh, this is the proposed amendment ordinance of chapter nineteen. Purchasing surplus of property is an amendment to existing ordinance that was, oh, I'm not seeing when it was actually adopted, almost, I think, seven, it's roughly about fifteen years ago. Section nineteen dash forty-nine, entry into contracts for procurement of goods or services, which the town's obligation or cost does not exceed two hundred thousand dollars. Beed ordained by the council of town of Tazza, Virginia pursuant to Virginia Code, section two point two dash four, forty-three oh three, and town charter, section three dash eight, that here.
and Town Charter, section three dash eight, that hereby acts the following amendment to Town Code, section nineteen dash forty nine, regarding the proposed adjustment to the limits restricting the town's authority to enter, to entry into contracts with the procurement of goods or services requiring solicitation of competitive sealed bids or engaging in competitive negotiation. Section nineteen dash forty nine, the former section bred entry into contracts with the procurement of goods or services with the town's obligation or cost does not exceed thirty thousand dollars, now it will read does not exceed two hundred thousand dollars. Paragraphs A and B were, will be stricken, and the new paragraph one will read as follows. The town shall not be required to solicit competitive sealed bids or competitive negotiation for single or term, single or terms contracts for, A, goods or services other than professional services and non-transportation related construction, if the aggregate or the sum of all phases is not expected to exceed two hundred thousand dollars. And B, transportation related construction, if the aggregate or sum of all phases is not expected to exceed twenty five thousand dollars. The town should not be required to solicit competitive sealed bids or competitive negotiation for single or terms contracts for, for professional services, provided the aggregate or sum of all phases is not expected to exceed eighty thousand dollars. And that is a new paragraph two. Paragraph three modifies the existing paragraph in the former orders. Prior to entering into any contract procuring any goods or services for which the town's obligation or cost exceeds twenty five thousand dollars, that is replacing the former three thousand dollars, but is less than two hundred thousand dollars, and that is replacing the former thirty thousand dollar figure. The purchasing agent shall obtain at least three quotes or bids from responsible offerors. The name, address, and telephone number of the responsible offeror supplying the quotes or bids and the amount of each shall be recorded by the purchasing agent. The purchasing agent shall also record that responsible offeror selected and the reason for its selection of the quoted bid was not the lowest received. If the number of responsible offerors is numbered to less than three, the purchasing agent shall, shall so record this fact and be free to select a single offeror from those available. And that last primary section of that paragraph was identical to your prior language. Same, same spiel as before, this will be the first reading. You'll have for the second reading in November. Unless it is waived, you can waive it, you can have a vote at any time. Depending on the vote, it can take effect in the past thirty days from the day to that vote. Any questions on those changes? Here in the.
Another question, so next, farmers market update, my direction.
There have been two grants that we've tried to apply for, one was the tobacco commission, and one was a T mobile grant. Both of the grants require some matching funds, and one of them also asks for engineering specs. In your packet, you will see that you have some drawings, and these drawings are design drawings. They're a front company called Dialog Design. We've had several meetings with them, they've been absolutely wonderful to work with. They gave us a, a great vision of what could be. However, if we're gonna have to have engineering drawings, I don't have a budget for that. I don't have, I don't have a budget to, to build. I don't have a budget for drawings, I don't have a budget for matching funds.
These are nice drawings.
They are very nice drawings.
The, the matching funds, was there a, what was it, a fifty percent match, was, was it grand optics?
So one of the grants, and I think it was the, I think it was the tobacco commission, I might have got this backwards. But you would have to match your seventy five percent match, but you could use in kind. So it didn't have to all be actual dollar value. However, we did find out something else, we, we thought we had loophole, and we didn't, we thought that we could use the funds from DHCB, DQ. And they said because it had already been exhausted, we weren't able to use those funds. So we kind of got back at square one. These, both of these grants will be opened again in February. So we have another shot to apply for this. I just need to know how to make it happen. What's the score difference?
My, my recommendation is to use rescue funds to fund the drawings. And then once we have, and I think, maybe I'm a little fresh with this, but once you have the drawings, can you then draw a quote from that in order to come up with, okay, here's, here's how long this two by four is, this is how much it costs. And then we could reattack how much we're willing to go into the matching funds. At that time, because then we actually know the cost to it. How much do you think the engineering drawing would cost? I mean, fifty thousand dollars or less is, is what I had in mind.
I spoke with Pam from Thompson and Lynn today, and she said the best guess that she could give me, they had just done a site plan for Bluefield, our planning ground, and it was forty four thousand dollars.
Okay.
So we're, I mean, that's pretty comparable to what you were thinking.
Okay.
So.
I feel this is a much needed project.
Yes.
They've been moved from place to place to place, all across town, I think, in time that they get off.
Well, not only this, it is a multi-use facility.
Yes.
It has a kitchen and a bathroom, and, you know, you're not there every day.
It'll be a drawing department, very much so.
Yeah. I could see lots of events happening there.
You could rent it out for a week, we could.
I couldn't tell if it was drawings.
It's open air.
Would a vehicle be able to pull up on the slide?
So they discussed that, and, and I, I did not like that idea at all, especially if we want to use it for other uses. I don't want tire marks and stuff like that on it.
Right.
But you could back up to the, to the.
You could back up and unload it onto the vehicle, okay. I just want to make sure that loading and unloading was thought of for, for the market itself and, or any of it.
So another question I have from the community, we got a planning grant. Block development grant?
A revitalization grant, yes.
For that area. Can any of the funds in that grant be utilized for the engineering drawings?
I don't think so, we totally showed all of that.
We, I think we already committed those funds to just, to David Hill, from Hill Studio, to do the plan for the year.
More drawings.
More drawings.
In the wrong business.
Definitely, I said those exact words.
You gotta box spray on it, Mike.
It, it's a sketch.
Yeah, do the motion? Uh, I'll make a motion that we can utilize fifty thousand dollars, up to fifty thousand dollars in rescue funds in order to fund the drawings for the, the farmer's market. I'll second that. Any discussion? Alright, all in favor of allowing Leanne to spend up to fifty thousand dollars for drawings for the farmer's market? Based of West End, I? All opposed, state of West End, May? Okay, so.
So in your packet, you also have a very nice invitation. There will be a community planning meeting, October sixteenth, that's next Wednesday, it'll be held at the train station. Registration is at five, and there's gonna be a opportunity to go over to the site of where the bowling alley was, where this new future home of the farmer's market will be. The, the company that Dialog Design will be there, they'll have, they'll have this, but on a much bigger scale, do a presentation. So you all please try to come to anything.
Another thing, just because I think it's good, as this has been in works for several years, and I'm writing, and we finally. But could you remind us again, the IDA had worked through DQ, and there's another outfit. Let's see, I've got their name. But again, just wanted to reiterate, Syntec, Syntec's, right? So they're working with. And in order to demolish this building by going out and, and working with DQ, they had their ground site studies done, and then they actually reduced the cost of tearing down this building by forty thousand dollars, was it?
Yeah, because they would want to have to remember it by hand, if we were going to try to save the building. And then after the, the last structural engineering report came, and they said it's, it's too far gone. So they said if we demoed, that the removal of asbestos would be included in the demo, and it dropped the cost tremendously because they didn't have to do it by hand. And that's how we were able to save that money.
And then from that grant work, they also got the drone, the designs and the drones, so. So I'm, I'm just saying, good work on your, your part and the IDA's part of doing that.
Very appreciative to DQ.
And to. Anything else? So next, from Sheriff Park Fields, do you agree?
Okay, so earlier this year, we had discussed some drainage issues and field condition issues of Irving and Shire Park Fields. So I was asked to get a quote, which I did, and the first quote that we had received was for infield repair. And that was for two fields, and it was going to cost sixty six thousand, three hundred dollars. So once we had figured, hey, this is just infield, I got a second quote, and the renovation for those fields were a total of three hundred and ninety thousand dollars. One, well, three, three hundred ninety thousand, one hundred ten dollars. And that would do demo irrigation, grading, sod, and the top dressing of the fields. There have been some discussion on this, and we, this is kind of where we're at at the moment. So do we want to have any type of discussion on what we would like to consider with fields?
Sixty six thousand's from the infield, right?
Yeah, it's just a place, so it, in my opinion, it's not even worth it, because a lot of the grants comes in from the outfield, right? And then it leaks into the infield, so.
Are there a lot of recreational grants we can get for stuff like this?
I have tried to find some on my own. I've not been very successful to do that. Now, are they out there? I'm sure they are, I just need to, I just need to know the right people to get the experience.
We could look at like, Corrigan, because it is health, health related, Corrigan has more influence for current, fortunate though. We could look at things like that, how often does it cost? My question on the, they, so the link, we talked about Lincoln Shire Park comprehensively. We know that we're gonna have pool issues that we have upcoming, right? We have how many, how many, how many fees of reasons per week, or?
It was like twenty two inches a day. I, I don't know for week.
It's leaking.
It's leaking.
We had discussed building into the budget, the lines for the swim teams. I think Ms. Emily brought up the bathrooms at, just first take. The aqua park inflatables, that was a forty thousand dollar price tag on it. We had a meeting with a respected person who has voiced support for helping out with foundational support. My question is, do we, the three hundred and ninety's a sticker shot. Do we want to look at this even bigger, or is this not the target we want to aim at? Because I'm a soccer fan and I coach soccer out on that, that field. I would love to have the field to not have to be a swamp and, and goalie boxes not be muddied out. I think that's a valuable improvement for our local kids, because we don't have anywhere else to practice. And it's used for adult softball, and Mr. Dave Stratsky said that they had good traction, they're coming back again this year. But, like, where, where are we at as far as how much we're willing to invest into this?
I don't know.
That's why I was saying, because there's gotta be some grants out there, recreation like that. And any of the grants, are we gonna have to have a matching portion?
I would, would assume, based on what I've been dealing with the farmer's market, I would say yes, but.
I see we keep talking on this, because there is a, a lot of other things that need updated there.
Right, yeah, that's what I was getting at, like, the batches, my goodness.
Uh, yeah, they look the same as when I was in middle school.
They seem like a complete revitalization, overhaul of everything.
We've tried, so far we've looked at builds, and we know that there are other structural needs at that facility. Is this something we should look at more comprehensively? Figure out there's gonna be a matching portion, and then come to terms with a sticker shot number that we'll have to, okay, we're gonna be in for half a million in order to get this facility to where it'll be great for the next ten years.
Out of twenty.
Well, at the rate we're going, yeah, twenties, twenties is what we'll be looking at, right?
But we have piece by piece upgrading, we upgraded Kid Zone, we've upgraded the tennis courts. You know, we upgraded the splash pad, so we're, we're doing it chunk by chunk at the moment, but you're right, we do need to have a comprehensive plan of upgrading the entire facility and not only upgrade it, and once it's upgraded, by the time we upgrade it, something else is gonna need, you know, replaced, so just like we do our, our cruisers for police, we need to make a plan for developing and moving forward with that facility.
My other question regarding Lincoln Shire is, we had, I think it was last year, manager Day had a report about the state of the dam and the health of the dam. I don't have like any situational awareness on that, is that anything that we'll ever have to improve? Or do we have any maintenance on that that costs?
So there was a day of inspection, but in twenty twenty three, Marshall Miller had done that. Then, but I'm a little new to this game. I, I'm not sure how often we have to have that inspected. I'm not aware of any issues with our dam.
He said it was in good health, it was fine.
Well, my members' flood gets me operational.
One of them, right? I got one of them.
Well, all of them.
Where's all of them? Is there one or two?
There's two, and I thought one of them was, and the other one was okay.
One of Ross's.
Yeah.
I don't trust those balloons.
You didn't want.
Right there, if you like, quick share. I mean, one of the two of those, I would.
They're, they can flood the water.
I probably wouldn't, because they're gonna burst sometimes.
There is a need to replace some of them.
Yes, we did need to replace something like that, because I don't know if it's here or bad, something like that jumping on it, and all of a sudden it gets blood under there.
I think we have a budget of a replacement cycle for here.
Yeah, for some of them.
For some of them.
How much are we making off of that? Just the aqua park, not the pool.
So if you feel it's hard to separate those, because you pay.
You pay for both.
Yeah.
Last, last meeting, looking at the last meeting on the interstate, she, she covered all that.
She broke down the pool, the aqua park.
Um, aqua park revenues for the last five years have been fifty seven thousand dollars. Over five years.
And that's from tickets purchased at the aqua park?
Yes, so.
And if they purchase it, they get at the pool, they have access to the aqua park?
They do, so you pay five dollars, you can go to the pool, you can go to the aqua park. So how we differentiate where that's posted in our revenue line loads? If you pay at the pool, it goes to pool admission. If you pay at aqua park, it goes to the aqua park admission, that's. That's, that's how we differentiate in our budget.
Well, I like the safety on this thing. Because I want, I like to initially cover that.
Well, what if, what if we set another marker for next meeting to address it again? And then if it's, if it's not the vector that we were aiming at, then we move on to the next, next item? Because we're not gonna be able to do these build improvements like cheap, right? It's not something we can do internally, I think, right? It's beyond the scope, right, for what our guys.
We can, we can repair, but can we replace?
Right, and we don't have the lasers and everything that you said, so the latest building. Good night. Thank you. I'm good with that.
Take that, mom. Good. I'm, I'm good, because, uh, one, I don't know if, you heard me earlier, Thompson Community Fund, or not Thompson, but Hazle Community Foundation will be involved in that. We can look to, talk to. Doesn't sound like that's sensible, it does.
We know what you were doing there.
All right, so we'll, uh, we'll discuss this again next month. So moving on, hurricane healing and storm cleanup update.
I'm going to try to, is there all readers digest topics? So the first thing I wanna say is thank you to our public works, our fire department, police department, EMS, and all of our nine-one-one dispatchers. Without all of those people, I don't know what we would have done. Um, you know, we're, we're pretty prepared for snowstorms, you know, up in the, up in the hills, but not so much hurricanes. So, uh, I learned a lot. I learned how important communication is. Without cell phones being installed with your internet and your cellphone usage, it's, it's very hard to communicate. So, um, some of our biggest issues were communications and no power. Trees were a, a huge, um, part of, of all that. There was an incident on Walnut Street where the police department had to go and help some citizens that were trapped in their homes because the water didn't get up. Our EMS department reported that people stopped by their station because they had no power and they were running out of oxygen. So they had to help deal with their oxygen and they could use some more affordable oxygen tanks there. Our sewer plant. So our sewer plant lost power. The pole for the power was in the river. We ran off of a generator for seven days for our sewer plant. And it took approximately five hundred gallons of diesel a day. And we're going to estimate it took two thousand dollars a day for fuel. We lost power to our pump stations and our water tanks. Dogwood Road and Buckle Tank, um, got very low, we had to issue a more water advisory. So as of today, that advisory is still in effect. We have to do a, what's called a BAC-T test to test for bacteria. We have received our test kit, we have took the test. We simply sampled to the lab and we're way here back from the lab. We thought we would hear back today, but they have not gotten results too much yet. So as soon as we can get those results to the office, drink and water, they will then tell us if we can lift it or if we have to remain. We had to rent a generator to run the peak water tank because they still didn't have power. They just got power back on Sunday. So we ran the peak tank for six days off of a generator. So this has really taught us, we could really use a generator that we could run these tanks on, which will just happen here. I'm not gonna sit here and pretend that I know what all this means, but Donnie says a hundred watt generator is what we need. It would run, not just, like, it would run the, the bigger tanks, so it would also work on the smaller tanks. So.
Not a bank?
Yes. What did I say, watt? Well, yeah. You knew what I meant.
I was hoping.
So a question before we move on, those fuel costs, are those reimbursable to you?
We are gonna try through FEMA to get reimbursed for that and the cost of renting the generator also. I don't know all the qualifications for FEMA reimbursements. And I also don't know if we're going to be able to get reimbursed for overtime. But I'm gonna try to have that data ready too. And if we can get reimbursed, that's great. If we can't, we, we did what we had to. Yes, it, I would look on, and the most obvious thing in your files, if you look at the fire department and see how many calls were run.
Quite good.
It was, they had over ninety in the month of September on.
And so I was gonna go to the fire department next. Our fire department actually had to go assist Clearfork and they had to take their boat and help rescue a family that had gotten trapped because the water had gotten so high. And during our meeting, they, they told me they had a system and I thought it was pretty neat. They had four crews out, two crews were in North Tazle, two crews were in Tazle. So it kept them kind of more in a centralized location, they didn't have to run all over town, they had better response times. So I actually kudos to them for, for thinking of that, that was a great job. Public Works was mainly focused on trees and debris, keeping the road clear. Something that has come up, so I just want to, I mean, I, I think that we all know this, but I just wanna say it for a purpose to say it. We cannot do anything with trees that have power lines going through them. That is, that is not us, that is AEP. Uh, we, we can't do it. Just, we'll let them, we can't do that. So with trees that are down, um, that have, you know, maybe, maybe we're able to chip them. We can chip what we can, we can burn what we can. Or if we are not able to do that, we are taking some out to the rainwater lot and offering for free firewood. I think that cleanup will, uh, go on for the next three weeks.
What do you mean that?
So. I think you can get some too. I know that he uses one too.
Really?
Yeah. Okay. Do you all have any questions?
All right. I saw, there was one incident where a, uh, just, it was a friend had a power line falling. So we got a lot of wire, a lot of wires on the house. Fire department can't cut power. Is there any, I, I just saw this deep revive from that event. It, what's the relationship between the fire department and AEP and the ability to cut power to a live wire that's on the house?
My understanding is that I understand the fire department, we relay that information to our nine-one-one dispatchers. And nine-one-one would contact AEP to notify all of the issue at that address.
Yeah. And they did respond fairly quickly to that. I was actually, after we got through on Walnut Street, I was, had downed a tree here or one of those that happened. And, um, they did respond fairly quickly. But because of John's team, uh, they saved that house.
Thanks.
They really did. They'd done some things that could have got themselves in harm's way, but they saved that house.
Thanks.
And also one of the things I wanna say, John had asked me, they were out on a very early morning fire this morning. They've got called back out to it a couple of times throughout the day. And he, he had messaged me and said, we've been out most of the day, is it okay if I can miss this? And I said, oh, he'll be at the house. So that's, that's why he's not here.
The fire started about five o'clock, is it one?
Yeah, it was at three.
It, uh, it fired back up.
Yeah, they, they had to go back out.
Back out.
I just like they meant all of the, uh, emergency service workers and your office as well and handling it as well as we possibly could have. It's hard to be prepared for things you don't typically prepare for.
Like no cell phones. I, I didn't know I was trying not to, to be the director of mass chaos during hurricanes. But here we are, so.
Well, one, one thing that I've discussed with several folks that may come from this is, come this winter, a lot of trees that might've got loosened up. We might have more issues if we have a big freeze or something like that. I wonder, speaking to Zach's comment, I wonder if we could talk to AEP or somebody, maybe do like a community session where they, you can see how to handle power lines. I mean, I know like it's something that we.
Touch on.
But I understand that, but like if people needed to be able to cut the power or whatever. Need to know how to handle situations when you come up to, uh, situations like that. There was a lot of power lines down, I expect if we have a big storm, we'll see.
It's like, if somebody has a situation like that, I can authorize AEP to hook it up temporarily, but they have like forty-eight hours or so long to get the electrician there to fix it and then we can do a permanent fix.
That's right. I just know, so at the top of Adams, like going up to Pete Wood, I know there was power lines down all the way across the road, so. And then on Ford Circle, I saw the aftermath and I was like, I don't know that I would know what to do if I walked out of my house and saw it. So it would be, I think it'd be good enough.
And to, to address the issue of like trees falling and, you know, in the future. So our crew has been out trying to cut back some of the, you know, overgrowth and the brush and the limbs that are hanging. So we are trying to kind of proactively address that. I mean, are we gonna get them home?
How many trees did it fell that hit and realized?
But, um, but they are trying to be proactive and, and try to address that now rather than later.
That's great, everybody did fantastic job.
Yes.
All right, so, uh, next is miscellaneous, I didn't see anything yet.
I had one question on one of them, I was curious, how do you determine who or what neighborhoods are governed by what tanks to do with getting water?
There's five phases. Not phases, zones, five zones, right? So there's a, a peak tank, Ford Circle tank, two Dogwood tanks, Hillsboro tank.
And they're all up here together, is what I was thinking, so I was just curious.
It's, it's whatever zone, they're, they're stacked.
Peak feeds down to Ford Circle Road, covers all of them up there.
Okay.
Ford Circle covers down to the Dogwood tanks, more or less. The Dogwood tanks go all the way down to the far side, the Dogwood comes out, Steels Lane does all of them, that's four-way. Also services this area.
I was gonna say, what tanks? Because I was, I'm sitting thinking, they're all north in terms of, up, above everybody else. And I'm like, how Dogwood and Steel's ended up under, and Buckle under a bowl of water in Marion Avenue and folks here in town did not, that was curious.
Just kind of on this thing.
Uh, no, that's why I'm trying to figure out which tank ran where.
Dogwood Ford Circle ran out, is that correct? I wasn't here, so.
Yeah, that would've fit my house.
So.
Dogwood didn't run right.
They got very low.
Yeah.
Now, the peak, had we not got that generator, the peak was not running out that day.
I'm just curious to know where the water went from where to where.
All right, so, next is our miscellaneous public comment. You have a time?
Uh, Mr. John Davidson.
State your name and address.
My name is John Davidson and my address is right over there. Right on Church Street. So first of all, thank you, uh, thanks for the great meeting tonight. Uh, I just wanted to follow up on the comments that you all made. I'm here to say thank you. Thank you to the leadership in the town, but especially to the individuals who came out. I saw police all over the place, obviously fire was all over the place. I moved from a place that had a lot of hurricanes, and so I can assure you that nobody is prepared for a hurricane. Doesn't happen. They say sometimes you're the windshield, sometimes you're the bug. When it's a hurricane, you're just a bug holding on to the windshield. So it is what it is. But it was an unbelievable job. And I saw leaders out serving, not just directing traffic, but actually pitching in, serving, so I wanna say thank you. And, uh, I, by the way, let's record show that it's only Davidson's doing public comment. Two hundred and fifty years ago, I think Davidson's owned most of this land, and so we're, we're taking over. We're, we're coming back, we're gonna get our land back. But obviously as a part of that, and I don't wanna step on anything, so I don't know what's planned. But, uh, we would love to do something back in the dragon for the first responders, police, fire, uh, town public works. We'll work in partnership with you to figure that out and at the time it works best with you all and us to get everybody. But between us and obviously Jay and Larry, so we're gonna have to all help, so. Now, to address the motorcycles, or as I like to refer to it as economic development. The, uh, the only better than economic development, obviously, is the constitution and government. So, uh, I'll tell you this, I'll take the sign in my yard to be, to, here in church time, and we would even put one out the back of the garage. I don't have a problem with that.
Now, are you kids allowed?
Unfortunately. As far as the, as far as the other sign, the trash sign, we'll put that at Stop List. But that's it, thank you all so much, I appreciate it. Thank you again to everybody, amazing effort, amazing job. Thank you, Jonathan.
Thank you. I hope you, I hope you.
All right, so, um, moving along, we've got council member comments, I do have a couple things. The, uh, Kids Fishing Day was amazing, we had ninety-five kids show up and fish. We had it open from eight-thirty and shut it down at about two-thirty. So it was, it was a really good time, kids were just enjoying themselves. It seemed like almost all of them stopped fish. So, uh, it's such a great event and I look forward to keeping it growing and doing better. This week, tomorrow actually is the Homecoming Parade, so that'll be coming six-thirty?
That's what it said.
About five forty-five, so I know that Lily Field, but it'll be going the opposite direction. And the Fire Prevention Parade is Saturday, we have, we have a time at five forty-five. No?
Yeah, sure.
But there's, there's no public works needed, they have their own signs, so they can clear.
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock. There we go, so we have that at six o'clock. And that's all I have, so any other council members?
I do. In addition to what everybody said, or what's, it's, it is the beauty of, uh, one of the beauties of living in a small town where everybody helps their neighbor out and that, that is a beautiful thing. And we got hats off to everybody, y'all, everybody did a great job. I would like to also, in addition to that, thank the chief. I had a, uh, kind of a, well, it was, it was an incident at the lake about three weeks ago. One of our furry friends got injured pretty badly way out at the far end of the lake. And I was in a panic, my wife more so than me, but, uh, was able to get over the chief. He was able to dispatch somebody out there, Officer Layton came out. And I was able to take my car out, get my dog in the car, and he's recovering and doing fine. But once again, it's a beauty of a small town and being able to get in touch with people. Just wanna say thanks for that as well, sir.
I just wanna echo, um, thank you to everybody, I mean, I ran the command post with the nine-one-one center. The most incidents that had ever been recorded in, in a single day was slightly under three hundred and there were well over seven hundred that day. So it was unlike anything I'd ever seen. And I have videos of our dispatcher to, for just thank you to, I mean, everybody, I can only get in the name of names, because everybody just does their mark of the job.
We laid that, we laid that groundwork with the leadership. Because you're not gonna get it right in a day, you gotta get it right today.
Right.
You show up the fastest, I start the track, you don't make the fastest.
Our dispatch center was amazing and I don't know how they handled everything they handled and especially with communication issues that we all experienced, not just cell phones, but our radios was, was useless as well. I mean, it was, it was chaotic and it sort of took us back in time of before we had good radio communications and had cell phones and people had to react on their own back like in the old stock. And how nine-one-one kept their cool, I'll never know because numerous times they called us, we called them and you couldn't hear and everybody was aggravated, they sounded each other. and you couldn't hear, and everybody was aggravated, but not at each other's business. It's a stressful moment. Nine-one-one, uh.
There are a few, there are a few civilian satellite comms that you could employ, something like a Garmin inReach, something like that. Inexpensive, you could buy them and lock, and you could pay the cheapest price a month.
It's interesting, and I'd like to get up with you on that.
Sure. Next film, it's a sport.
It's very similar, it's great satellite, and you can do it as cheap as you want, and if you need the plan to ramp up, you could call immediately.
And run it up to anything. Up to a thousand miles, it's nuts.
What was that?
It's a Garmin inReach. And it'll work even off your cell, so you can, you can take a photo off your cell, and because you're hooked up through the app there, it will transmit to a satellite to wherever. So if Chief and I were on the other ends of town, and I'm like, hey, chief, we've got trees, and we've got unfortunately a body, or we've got something going on here, I'd photo, I'd send a text, and transmit. Even though we can't talk by voice, we're still communicating.
See, with the cell phones went down, and we found that T-Mobile was able, that's how we communicated with T-Mobile.
Wow. There's a sponsorship right there. You want to take a link, shark?
That's interesting that you say that, because they have reached out to us and just recently, and we tried their service here, and it still was horrible in certain areas, so it's interesting.
Dude, they, they turned the week up to a lavender store.
There you go, there you go. There you go.
I did really good with my T-Mobile phone. I think I might have lost it for about forty-five minutes.
Wow. Spectrum is pretty much tied to AEP. AEP goes down.
Anybody?
Motion to the governor's desk.
Second. It is. Being discussed. I'll put a picture of your speech up on the line.